Before we get started, I'm going to ask Mr. Rayner to help us out and look at how she made a couple of adjustments to the budget that were not, the money was not moved from within the budget. So the bottom line of the budget is not going to change, but we have a couple of adjustments to make. The first was additional money for the grass cutting for the town side and also the $18,000 that was allocated for the Quinton Island planning commission. Mr. Rayner?
Mr. President, committee, council, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Rayner, can you speak a little bit closer to my question? I don't see it up.
Absolutely. What we were asked to do, we were asked to take a look at where the additional $9,830 would come from for the grass cutting contract and where the $18,000 for the AIPC, where we would recommend that come from. The $9,830 to the edited grass cutting contract above which, above that which you had already provisionally approved in a DPW budget, we propose that that amount come from the legal contingency line item. The legal contingency line item is $85,000. That was budgeted to cover contingencies, specifically the anticipated judgment with regard to the tax revaluation case in Carnegie Abbey. So there's $85,000, that's on page 36 of the budget.
I have 37 of them.
Okay. So we see the reserve for claims is $85,030. So that would reduce that amount to $75,200. And then the $9,830 will be added to the DPW line item for grass cutting in their budget.
So what would that make the grass cutting budget? Seventy-one thousand against DPW? That's on page 46.
Yes, on page 46, on your printed book, Mr. Hamilton, and the rest of us that have the original page, it's page 45.
Seventy-two.
That's on page 45.
What's the new bottom line for grass cutting?
The new bottom line for grass cutting, it would go from $62,500 to $72,330.
Okay. So can I have a motion from the council to adjust the reserve for claims line item in the legal expenditures from $85,030 to $75,200? Any discussion? The bottom line would go to, a quick question. Make it 292?
Two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, two-hundred dollars for expenditures.
So it's working on the change the line item, reserve claims to $75,200. We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now a motion to accept the new legal expenditures bottom line of $290,200. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we're going to change the line item for grass cutting to, from $62,500 to $72,330. Are you motion to do so?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And now, Lisa, what's the bottom line for the DPW budget?
Twenty-one.
Seven-twenty-one.
$2,649,721.
I got my motion to set the DPW expenditures to $2,649,721.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now we can move on to the AIPC line item.
So on AIPC, we could put $18,000 into the Quinton Island planning line item in the planning budget, which is on page 48. And yours, I believe the number is...
Yeah.
Page fifty. Page fifty, yeah. So the Quinton Island planning line item would go from blank to $18,000. That would change the planning bottom line to $351,669. On page 48?
Page fifty on the...
Three by one, six...
And why don't we start with where that is coming from as well?
And that would come, if you go to the expenditure summary page... Online version? Page fifty-eight. We're associated with page fifty-six. And we would propose that that $18,000 come from the fund balance line, changing that...
So taking the $19,368 down to $1,0368?
It's on page fifty-eight, or fifty-six, fifty-eight on the online version. And if you look to the middle of the page, you'll see a line for fund balance. And that line item right now is $19,368. So we take the $18,000 from there, and that would drop that line to $1,368. And that would change the bottom lines, stay the same. The total municipal line item, off the line, every dollar subterfuge, the bottom line would stay the same, the subtotal would change to $76,368, twice the $94,368.
The first motion would be to move $18,000 of the fund balance to the Quinton Island planning line item in the planners' budget. Motion to do so?
So moved.
Any discussion? Mr. President?
I believe we have four to three vote on this fund balance line item already. So, so I believe, I believe the line item... So I believe that line item on the last vote, we took $300 from the, I thought the line item was over to nineteen, it was already down to $17,251, by the $3,000 we already moved into, it wasn't nineteen, $17,251. Is that true or not?
I'm looking here.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
I thought it was $3,000 out of that.
I think it was another, I think it was there, $2,000 or it came out to someplace else.
Yeah, we're looking at some quicks first. I think you're correct. So that line item should be $17,251.
Not to nineteen.
Not to nineteen. So then the recommendation would be to take that to zero. And then you would need $749, and I'd recommend take that contingency.
Motion to amend the motion.
So the fund balance would be zero. The contingency line item would go from $30,000 to, let me count, $29,251.
And that would change the bottom line of both, so change that ninety-four, that's $76,368, and go down to $75,000.
Yes.
And then three, $334,639, drop by $749.
That's correct.
Which now makes it $3333,000. Anybody got a copy? Wrong direction.
Wrong direction.
$333.
$333.
$333.
Five hundred and seventy.
Five seventy-nine. Okay. So why don't we do this the easier way, Mr. Ryan Hughes, your last motion, and this is purely a third second, we will have a motion to add to the prime motion. Thank you. Okay. So now, first motion, we're looking at changing the contingency line item from $30,000 to $29,251. Motion to do so?
So moved.
So second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Next, where we set the bottom line for that accounts, for that expenditure line item, from $3334,639 to $3333,579. Motion to do so? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Next, we will zero out the fund balance line item from $19,368 to zero.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. And then that would take that bottom line to $75,000. Motion to do so?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Next, we'll go back to planners' budget on page fifty on the online version, and page forty-six, you said, Mr. Rayner? Of the old original printer?
Planings on the old print version, on the online version, it is page fifty, on the print version, it is basically...
We're going to move to add $18,000, well, place the $18,000 in the Quinton Island planning commission budget, that was already approved in an earlier meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Bottom line for the new planners' budget is $351,669. I did my math right?
Yes.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to two. Yes, in favor? Your name?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that is all the housekeeping we had to do. Now we will start back at the top, on page twenty in my book, at the revenues. Anybody have questions on the revenues of the budgets? Total budget revenue summary, which is on page twenty-six of the online version, and a couple pages earlier on the old version. Revenues come in at $63,253,108. Any questions or comments from the council or the school committee? Mr. Fitzhugh? Question? Comment?
Yes, sir, I do. It's on the levy, is this the right spot?
This is where the revenue is in the levy committee. Although I don't see that yet.
I'm up there. You can see it.
He is here.
I have the chair, ladies and gentlemen, of the council and the school committee. I hear that's housekeeping issues. I'd like to ask the questions, begin with the cover letter to the agenda, Natasha, you must be able to sell out. I suspect I know what it is, but the address, how the levy was calculated, however, its reference, which was to a House bill 2017-5157, that reference doesn't work, because that's a criminal sentencing, I believe. But in any case, we looked at 2018, which wasn't the case anyway, we'll check that and give a match, there's no bill by that number. But in any case, authority doesn't come from the House bill, it comes from what island general law, which I'm sure many people do understand. The law, what island general law, forty-four, statute five, page two, it was changed in 2017, so I'd like to clean up that. And that change removed the motor vehicle property tax calculation on the max levy for the total. So motor vehicle property tax on vehicles has been improved in the calculation. I think that that's what you intended to say, and you have to be correct.
I'm not sure what, I didn't write a letter about that, but...
Well, head your name.
Can I see the letters? I didn't...
Let me see. Unfortunately, I have to come to these things without a hangup. Do you have a...
Yes.
Again, that is housekeeping, and I think I understand the point. It is important to understand the calculation of the levies changed. So let me speak to the revenue. Principal revenue for town, obviously, is the levy, property tax levy against three positions, which is residential, commercial property, and against inventory in our businesses. So in any case, this levy, if I use my numbers instead of the numbers in this letter, which I only rolled it off, it means a little difference, and now the levy orders. But in any case, it is a 3.97 on the levy, which is obviously, perisically close to 4.0. 4.0 is the tax cap under the law, and the council, indeed, by my understanding of the law, and I was there when it was done, six affirmative votes to pass a 4.0 budget or a greater. So chances of that, that's good. So we're right up against the limits. Now, the levy will stand as the budget is adopted, adopted, and I don't know, just maybe we need to change it, but just, just for the purposes of this discussion, I doubt we've gotten votes to change this budget by any means. Now, back to the issue here. For the residential property tax, for people already on their home, it is an increase of 3.59%, which is historically high. We haven't seen this kind of a tax increase in a good number of years. And I think it's inappropriate to say the least, but we are levying a very substantial tax increase this year against everybody who pays it. Everybody does directly, almost everybody that lives in town pays either directly or indirectly through their rent. So my issue with that is the inflation, rate inflation, CPI, for the following twelve months, which means right to this moment, is 3.1%. And taxes for homeowners going up 3.59% to 3.6%. So we have been consistent down two years, being taxes go up faster than that for the rate inflation is a good proxy up until probably this year, for people's salaries economically. That I think will break down, but still probably holds largely. Regarding one thing I missed on the levy, you are $16,600 away from 4.0 on the levy. I don't think that changed, the bottom line hasn't changed, that should have changed. And if you recap by using your number, or the number in that letter, it may be slightly less, it's not substantial less. Again, this is very high level, we, unfortunately, concerned citizens, don't think it's an appropriate thing to do. It shouldn't surprise me. One other thing that concerns us is, with this budget at practical limits, funding for core operations seems to have been cut back. I don't know, of course, that would depend on what you think your core operation is, certainly the schools are. But in this context, I'm speaking about matters on the municipal side, in particular pensions, the other post-acquired benefits, funds, and investment funds in those two areas, and roadblocks. There's probably others I can think of, of general use, as an example. Those areas are being cut back, and now we're continuing to fund AIPC at $18,000, some other things that I would object to. So they're not core operational requirements in town, under anybody's interpretation. So we continue to place monies in places they don't, they contribute contributions to town, while we do so for other reasons. I'd like to ask a few questions about the pension plan, if you want me to delay, do you get to the pension plan? By the way, I only count ten citizens in this room. And that brings up another issue. Why assume we didn't get a pretty budget this time? It always has in the past, I can't recall any time, we didn't get one. And it's almost impossible for us to follow anything that happens on the council, like the adjustments were just made, and I have to have a copy of the old budget to participate in the use of mine, the old one. I thought I would get one on the case for later, you can't follow any of this if you don't have a copy of the budget. All of you do, and none of the citizens do, except for anybody who might have figured it out, which is quite a burden. It is my understanding that's a requirement with these hearings. But in any case, maybe one of the reasons why nobody shows up. But I would like to go into pensions. I reviewed the part of the, using the online version, of the pensions, and I wasn't able to follow, find the contribution of the pension plan anywhere.
Somebody else give that? Could be, is that your buddy, HR buddy? You've got the older one, right?
And I can see at the end of the, at the end of the budget, in page seventy-four and page seventy-five, a discussion of the pension and the recommended payments into the fund.
I believe you have.
For just informational sake, for this year, the recommended contribution was $4,324,300, which would bring us to 59% funded, which is obviously one percentage point under the state, corner of 60%. And by the way, that's arbitrary, and not a good idea. Or underfunding the pension event, I can find a number, no. But my question is, how much are we putting into the pension fund in this budget?
Mr. President, you'll find the pension contribution for each department, so you'll see it in fire, DPW, police, and that all non-fire DPW police are accounted for in the H R, which is, you can see it's federal school, and we do make a 100% of our...
Okay. I understand that. Thank you. But do we have a total?
I can work off.
Or not? Is this the line?
It's the annual required contribution.
I put it, I have to add it up.
Okay. So if we went with the annual required contribution, so the number I just read off, $4 million and change, that's an answer, so that's good, but... This schedule is included, and I'll show it to you by division, so include it on page seventy-six, the online version. It shows us getting to 60% next year, and up above that in continuing years, but we don't go up very quickly. So observe what I think everyone knows, and that is that the fast road to addition for a municipal government is to fail to make these contributions. And we, as a group, we see it a lot through this budget quite a bit, we're seeing nuts backs in all of these areas, and I'm pleased if there wasn't one in pension, because that would be very ridiculous. But we don't have to look too far to find a city that's on the edge of disaster, because they didn't manage to account for it. Providence, for those who don't know, their unfunded liability is $1 billion for the pensions, and $1 billion for other post-acquired benefits, and there is a chance of snowplow account, but they're never paying that off. You and I are going to pay that off one of these days.
I don't know, we're paying it off now.
Well, we're already sending about 60% of their budget to them.
Exactly.
So, yes, paying it off now.
Right. So, not really a chance.
Well, we're helping them out, tread water, but beyond that, let's move on. I'd like to look to page sixty-five, I think that's where lease agreements are, or lease payments go. And my issue is the funding of furniture for the new police station. In the current budget, there's $60,000 and $60,000 each of the following two years, a total of $180,000. And I don't think that's appropriate. This was supposed to be paid for by the bond. And bond language is on the ballot, and the same is in the ordinance, and it's the same as in the state law.
But the furniture was never included in that?
I disagree.
It was taken out prior to the bond.
Well, when you read the ballot measure, the town affirms that to issue general obligation bonds and/or notes in the amount not to exceed $10 million for the design, construction, equipment, and furnishing of a new police station. So when we went to the ballot box, that's what we read. Are you saying that we don't need to worry about that anymore? Is that the message? I would submit that, I hear no answer. I would submit, if you're obligated, follow the promise you made in the people in town. Nobody said anything about how additional funding would be necessary when this thing was voted on the ballot box, that I remember in 2016. So I certainly thought that the furnishings were going to be in it, and I thought it would be a good thing to come in here. And I recognize that we have some cost overruns with these growing costs in this project.
First of all, there are no cost overruns.
Well, not yet. But there are changes.
But there are no cost overruns.
Well, let me give you the numbers, I know you know the numbers. Let me, just for the record, stick... Let me, just for the record, take. The construction contract is eight point three one billion. There are four change orders, which sum to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That raises the cost of construction, which originally was supposed to be eight million, to eight million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand. I believe, here I need a question answered, too. The architectural fees were five hundred thousand. And clerk of the works is another hundred thousand. Is that correct?
I don't know what exactly is a hundred thousand. For our question. The owner is represented, huh?
Owner's represented.
Hundred, close to a hundred and forty.
I rounded off to six hundred thousand.
Okay.
And that makes the total obligations to page nine million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand. And I'm only talking about construction. Well, no, I'm not talking about just construction, because the architectural fees and clerk of the works, the construction management oversight committee, not committed company, are outside of construction costs. But you add those together, and we're at to nine point one four eight billion. And we haven't got even the permanent stage of construction of this project. I think we all know mechanical, electrical, and other plumbing and stuff like that, where change orders have to, to commit, and difficulties arise in funding these things. But I know it says you got about eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars left to buy equipments and furnishings. You can say all you want, but I just...
The budget is included, furniture.
I just read the bond.
I understand.
So you don't, you don't think that the bond and price is advertised for limited? You think you have the authority to spend additional funds as you need? Is that a point?
I think we're spending money to equip the, furnish the police station. We are spending up to ten million dollars, which is building a new police station and taking down the old police station. We're doing the site, the apartment, not inside of it. Not inside the police station, but under it, apartment, front of the police station.
But it does include the equipment and furnishing?
It does include equipment. It does not include furniture.
And why was that the bond in the law?
Was it old as I... What you want to tell me?
Well, what I'm saying is that you need to keep this project, because advertised cost is ten million dollars.
It will be within ten million dollars.
Now, when you buy furniture outside of budget for one hundred and eighty thousand?
So then your recommendation is to build a police station and not furniture?
No, my recommendation is to buy this project for ten million dollars.
But hold it, Chair.
Mr. President, in the design documents, it was always very clear. It was zeroed out. FFNE was zeroed out. I provided that to the council a while ago. So it was understood from the very beginning that FFNE was going to be paid for via other town funds. In the bond document, when you're talking about furnishing a building, we're talking about furnishing a building, not, we're not talking about chairs and tables. We're talking about furnishings that require, that are required to make a functional building. The wiring in the walls, the sockets, the lights, the detention cells, those kinds of things. So that is, that's where that ten million dollars figure came from. It was from that two thousand, I believe, thirteen document. The FFNE was never in that figure.
So it doesn't, ten million dollars doesn't buy us light jackets and stuff like that?
That's not what I said. It is. You're going to get a functioning building. We need to put furniture, fixtures, and equipment in there that were outside of the scope of that project that was already agreed to by previous councils that would be zeroed out in the original study. So what's, that's what the figure down to ten million dollars. The building itself is about eight point three, I believe. That's what we're building.
Well, I think we can disagree on that clearly. We do. My view of fines is, when you tell me, when you tell me you're devoting buildings, ten million dollars, that's what it should be. And I remember a number of times, Mr. President, you saying ten million dollars is it, and there isn't one. That's been repeated by yourself, which I support and admire. And somehow along the line, building documents somehow changed what the people voted on and what the law says. And when I read the law and it says furnishings, I believe I understand it to be furniture. And I think everybody else, the vast majority of the rest of the people voted on that thing, also came to that conclusion. It's all my remarks. Does somebody have a question? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John A. Davis. I live at three sixty-two West Main Road. And I'll tell you just a little bit about me before I get to the reason I'm here. First of all, I worked on a family farm from the time I was eight years old and worked for others. And before I was twenty, I joined the U.S. Navy and served there for twenty-four years. After that, I worked for a major corporation, which is called Xerox, for twenty-three years. And after that, I ran an electrical business. Till my wife and I decided to move back to Rhode Island, because this is where I grew up. And I will tell you, I was not real happy when I read the paper that we're lucky at raising the tax rate on our property to almost four percent. So I did a little research. First of all, I want to tell you one other thing about myself. If I lived in the nineteenth, I would be seventy-eight years of age. And I certainly did not plan to have to be living, be working twenty-four to thirty hours a week just to maintain a good lifestyle in Portland. When I was back here in nineteen seventy, courtesy of the Navy, this was a nice, quiet town and not very expensive. It seems that we've gotten more expensive over the years. So my wife and I did a little research before I came to meeting tonight. I like to be prepared. And first of all, we went back through our tax records and found out that in fact, as of right now, the tax rate on our property is going up over twenty-five percent. Now, my, my property has certainly not increased that much. As a matter of fact, for a number of years, it went down. So with this almost four percent increase, that would mean in less than fifteen years, our tax property has increased at thirty percent. Now, here's the good news. I then went back and looked at the latest census. And I found that twenty-one percent of the adults that live in Portland are over the age of sixty-five. Another sixteen point one percent of the people living in property in Portland are over the age of fifty-five. This means that thirty percent, six percent of the people who are retired or planning to retire are being hit with taxes that they can't afford in their declining years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Are there any further questions or comments on the revenue section? Mr. Chair.
You need it for this?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to find out, I think there were some valid points that were made. However, our, our present tax assessor is very conservative. And right now, I think it should be pointed out that there's... I'm sorry, the lady's saying others. She can't hear me. Which is odd. Most people can hear me all over, so... But I was, I was saying, ma'am, that there is a lot of new construction underway. And our present tax assessor is very conservative. And he doesn't like to put that into the fold until it's ready. But there is, if people go around, we don't have cranes in the sky like Providence, like one of the candidates says. But what we do have are projects going around that are net positive on taxes that will be coming on board this next year. Several large convenience stores, several medical and professional office buildings, condominiums, that we haven't seen around here for probably the last ten or twelve years. Also, the, the comment about the percentages and the cost of voting, which is, which is a very valid concern with the number of people. But I would say that the two percent increase over the last, I did a lot of appraisal work, is, is fairly common to the, the areas around here. And last, on the cost of construction for the police station and other municipal buildings. Approximately a year, year and a half ago, public schools as an example, the cost of construction per square foot was somewhere like around three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. This year, overall, just as a general figure, it's four hundred and six dollars. And the anticipated cost per square foot for buildings next year, they're projecting around four hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. So I just wanted to bring that out. So these are the things that you have to be contented with and are actually going on. And I just wanted to point out, I'm not trying to belittle the concerns about the tax rates and the issues and all that. But there is some potential relief to some of those situations coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we get an answer on this number?
In terms of the number?
Yeah.
The house number?
Oh, it says the most increase is three point six. But yeah, here it is, three point six.
Matt, what's our, what's the official final?
Mr. President, what number? Three point six is the tax rate. It's some kind of...
Do you have my piece of papers?
Oh, thank you.
You've got others to rely on?
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted to talk about.
I'm reading one tenth here, right? The numbers of the tax levies that are on the letter that you wrote for Dudenkriner, I believe are off by a bit. If you look at the tax revenue from the page or the report that you put out, and you subtract the motor vehicle, you do not get the numbers that are on your letter. At least I tried several times and never got those numbers. You get the numbers that are written in red, and I'll get back to you. I think there may be some more mistakes on your letter that you need to look at. For the records, my name on the bottom, it's not my, it's my clerk. Okay? Yeah. The clerk's office. Just for the record, if you put in package, I'd ask you one more.
This is the letter that you got about the clerk's office, the finance office, that is sent to the state, fed by the state, and then returned back to us with any corrections.
Any further questions on the revenue area, the bottom line revenue? Again, it's sixty-three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars for a total revenue increase of two point four percent. One thing I can say about, and I know this doesn't make the tax increase any better, but if we zeroed out every single line in every department and made them have zero percent increase, meaning we didn't add more to pensions, didn't pay anybody anymore, didn't buy any more gas, didn't pay any more road, didn't pay the teachers anymore, buy any more paper for the schools, there still would be a tax increase because the money that we lose for the state. So unfortunately, we're stuck in a rut. Sure. Edison. Edison, sir.
Well, I'd rise to agree. I think the number is something like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong. But we didn't receive this year, we received last year, state funding. It is in the car tax business. It's in the student funding form.
The inequitable funding form, yes.
And I should have mentioned it, so I'll mention it now, that we in East Bay are consistently making advantage of a voting block in the Assembly. That's really what's going on here. If you look at a map of these communities that received less funding under the student forum, almost all of them are East Bay. One exception was Barrington.
Barrington gets more.
Barrington was an exception simply because they didn't get any aid at all under, under the student funding form. So thank you for mentioning it. It is an important matter. And I don't know what we can do about it, except for maybe declaring dependence. But I guess it shouldn't be run by our Assembly. I'll put that down. Thank you.
It's an easy thing to do, but it would be, representatives, the centers who live outside, as you call it, the voting block, I'll call it inside of ninety-five, could get together, make their own voting block. So it's not just East Bay. It's South County. It's, you know, South Kingston, North Kingston, Westley, all that as well. So...
Yet the money does flow the other way. Everybody understands that. We're making massive contributions into the core cities. Thank you.
Absolutely. If you, if you look at the city of Princeton, we lose roughly two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. That goes directly to Princeton. We get an extra three million dollars a year. So they're not having tax increases like we are, because they're getting extra money from the state when their schools are paying for their increases. So it is very difficult. I agree with you a hundred percent that we should do something about that voting block. Anybody who may be likely from State Office. Any other questions on that? Mr. Gaston?
Well, I, well, it's the documents that have been published. I know this isn't your letter, but I want to say it's your letter again. We have the property tax value of fifty-two, three, three fifteen, seven hundred. And I can't, with any kind of spreadsheet, come up with any kind of the numbers that can be posted there. So if you could tell me how that, the first two sentences of, actually the first sentence of your letter, fifty-two, three fifteen, and then fifty million, three twenty-four, can you tell me, from this budget book, how those two, how those two numbers are determined?
No. I can't.
So we have a budget book in front of us, and we're asked to vote on it. We get a different piece of paper. And there's no way to get the numbers?
Yeah, you're not being asked to vote on it, is that?
It doesn't matter whether it's committed or it's...
It's way different.
Another complication. I think math is an pretty exact science. And if you tell me I take out motor vehicle excise tax, it's a base out number, and another category, right, a collection, if that's what it is, and that's on tax levy, I still can't pay that amount. Go back to the, you know, this piece of paper, I would say we generated in the town, and you signed. Went to the state. And send up different corrections. But now, the numbers on this budget book, that's just, I just get more confused, because I think this is supposed to be an exact science.
I can go up the microphone and grab that, please.
The numbers in the letter, there was a letter, okay? The numbers of use to calculate the budget have to consider election rate, floor rate, taxes, prior year collection. So that is why the numbers in the budget book don't exactly measure match the levy amount.
But if you tell me which numbers to take out? But if you tell me which numbers to take out, when we have all the prior, the rec, the collecting numbers, they should add up to sixty-three million, four hundred and thirty-seven of the day, but.
Well, the levy is just maybe seven point eight percent and above that.
So, I get one number off, fifty-two. Matt, if you can correct me, or straighten me out, real estate taxes, the levy should be residential, commercial tangible, personal property taxes. Correct? When you add those three line items together, I come up with fifty million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. Okay? In the letter, it's fifty million, three twenty-four, eight ninety-three.
In the letter, that is done prior, we're just getting final numbers there, and some minutes, that is still out there, that happened to be calculated, it's a proposed thing, it's just an estimate.
Thank you, sir. Gaston, anyone else? During that, we'll slide on to the expenditure side. Starting with the town council expenditure of eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Any questions on town council budget? If anybody wants to get, stick up a hand or make a movement, I'll stop. Next up is the town administrator budget, I'm on page twenty-eight, I think, that's the online version. And the old version would be about twenty-six, I think, thirty-seven, I guess we're one page off. Town administrator budget, bottom line is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred. Any questions on town administrator? Town clerk's office, three hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and one. Any questions on the clerk? Canvassing office always has a large increase during election year. This year is a twenty-five percent increase for two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight, pay for the primaries.
Primaries?
Or primary, did you get it? Questions, I can't hear you. Finance department, total budget is seven hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven, which is a decrease of nine point two seven percent. Information Technology, hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, increase of forty-four percent. We're getting a lot of new licenses and software is to be upgraded, which will do IT equipment as well, to upgrade some of the dark age computers that we have. Human Resources, which encompasses both salaries and also a lot of the pension items, workers compensation insurance, regular insurance, life insurance. Bottom line, the human resources budget is two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars. Any questions on H R?
I have one question, reform policy. Does it make sense, because human resources pays all of the pensions that they will have to collect the pension costs on this page and show all of those numbers on this bottom? We can certainly do that, I think that would make more sense, and O P E V is carrying the same. I guess I, I guess I do have a question. The one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty million dollars, is that total O P E V cost of the town? That's correct. That includes police supply. This is, yeah, O P E V is for all the departments, but when you see the tangible contribution, that's for everybody that's not public safety, you know you. So I think your original question is going to be capture it all in H R, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. Please, next question.
We understand it wherever it is.
Correct.
For next Monday, don't change the whole book, but could you just get us the bottom line?
Yes.
Please. And then we'll make that adjustment the next year. You can make that adjustment the next year. Tax assessment, tax collection budget, is a two point five percent increase, total budget, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine. Questions on taxes, collections, assessment? Next, legal expenditures, as rocks, there's a change made tonight, from three hundred thousand, thirty dollars to two hundred and ninety, two thousand, two hundred dollars, did I correct that?
Two hundred and ninety.
To two ninety?
Two ninety, two hundred.
Thank you. Any questions on legal expenditures? Police department, mainland police department, just for the policing activities, increase of one point four nine percent. Total budget, five million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Questions on the police department? Prudence Island Public Safety, total budget, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. That covers the one officer and also temporary officer, who went to Atlanta, is not available on yet. Animal control, total budget, hundred and fourteen thousand, seven ninety-four. That covers the salary and benefits for our animal control officer and also the cost for running a shelter for us, which is covered by the potter animal. Our master budget is eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Fire department, total bottom line number for the fire department, this is mainland fire department, against main island. Six million, seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. And, hold on a second, let me get to it. The Prudence Island Valentine Fire Department budget is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. That is on page fifty-five, I had to jump off of that. So fifty-four probably be. The six, because the six is more.
Fifty-five.
One hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. That number did not change. Want to put it in context of the fire department as well. Public Works. We have separated out here, so the general, everyday public works department budget is two million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. That is with the addition of ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars?
Eight hundred and thirty.
Eight hundred and thirty, thank you. For the increased cost of the grass mowing contract for the next three years, that we split with the school department and also the public library. Any questions on the EPW budget proper? Next, we have the expenditures for the public works under snow removal and road improvements. Total line item here is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which includes overtime for snow removal, contracted snow removal, materials, salt, we'll see it, and then also six hundred thousand dollars for rotating and maintenance.
So do we, do we have updated on the actual road program? July through December, fifteen, two thousand, it's now June.
Yeah, you're right.
We have actually eight hundred and seven seventeen, July through December, but now it's June, we have updated.
So we're on track to spend the entire eight hundred thousand, but it's still not a big haul. And we spent four hundred, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, and I have another ten thousand to spend.
So.
So what is going on?
I'm going to round these up, it's like, I just got to hurry, but we've already spent four hundred and thirty, and you're going to spend another three hundred and ten, which is inactive now, I know Diane and Cheryl came, I don't want to hard rock it, they paid for it.
Diane and Cheryl, Diane and Cheryl, hard rocking, solid.
So we're on track for July first, you've spent a total eight hundred thousand dollars on it for last year.
And, so those roads that you mentioned, that's going to be up to seven hundred, what are you doing to those roads? Are you reclaiming them, or are you just?
Before those were reclaimed, Cheryl, Diane, Carter, and Solomon reclaimed and worked.
And what's been done?
Real old thing, area moved and all, we stepped.
So it's mostly recognition?
Most of it, one before that, and then the spring, and the half, it's going on again.
Any other questions on revenue? Due to the budget this year is the Prudence Island transfer station cost of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Also in the revenues, if you look earlier, there's revenues with the money that is brought in from Prudence Island for their transfer station stickers, moves in to help offset this mine damage, but doesn't cover it all back up, it's just what the rebound owes roughly?
Yes, that's correct.
Next is the planning budget, expenditures have changed, the addition of eighteen thousand dollars, the first one going on the planning commission. Total budget now is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Next is the building inspection budgets, which is three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, an increase of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, mainly due to an increased cost for our electrical inspection officer, who retired this year, and now it's becoming more expensive. Henry's doing the town favor. Planning board, administrative officer, and general budget, thirty-two thousand, fifty-two dollars. Economic development, thirty-one thousand dollars. Recreation and parks, should be parks and recreation, is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which includes operations for St. Horn Beach. Also under parks, we have Glen Park, which is eighty-one hundred dollars. We have, which is an increase of twenty-five percent, extra money for buildings and grounds, they put a new building in, and also to build excellent buildings as well. Bell Hill Park, same level, eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. Civic support. Yep. All right.
It's certainly the dog park with the recreation parks, because right now, the dog park's management is.
So the request was to separate out the dog park from the other parks, recreation?
Yes, just like all the other parks.
I don't think I'm talking into close numbers.
Just like all the other parks.
Thank you.
Because we have, right now, we have dog park expenditures under EPW.
Under civic support, support is in the, is for pass-through money from the state library, our money to give there into the library, which is an increase this year. Fortaleza Historical Society, Fortaleza C U Center, C U Center's blessing, thirty-three thousand dollars again for the Newport County Community Health Center, and Suburban Streets Tax Force, at thirty-one thousand, six ninety-six, for a total bottom line of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, twenty-one dollars. Schools. Question on schools, a little page out. Civic support, of course. Sir, which one are you going to speak to, civic support of the schools?
Schools. Last night, the school committee meeting, the budget report for the month of May, was reported, the projection, the line projection, surplus of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Now, obviously, we've got another month to go, that may change. However, I would like to propose a reduction in the tax rate through the use of one hundred thousand dollars reduction in the school department's appropriation, which is up a small amount this year, about one point three eight percent of the memory service. So, in any case, my proposal is to reduce the budget, which is thirty-seven million and change, by one hundred thousand dollars, with the authority to remove one hundred thousand dollars from the department's reserves in the budget, within the budget. They do have authority to do that if they wish, and move it back in on a one-time basis. So I don't want to add, if you take this out, I don't know what the council will do, if you take this out, it shouldn't be added in later on, back into the budget, and added it to their bottom line, just as that is. So, by my, by my calculation, one hundred thousand dollars is about one-third of one percent of the school department's budget. Now, having made this proposal, what I've done is taken money from a place where I think they've got some, not necessarily a matter of judgment on how they manage their budget, which I think they do a pretty good job of, and certainly not a judgment on Mr. DeGiro, the financial director, and he does an excellent job. Matter of fact, his report is excellent. So, we need, if we can, to find, in my judgment, somewhere where we can reduce tax on this thing, instead of just going right up to the top, we should attempt to try and back this on. So it's not much, I think it's a token, and I would suggest the council reduce the school department budget on the criteria outlined by one hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
So I'll speak to that just in general terms, if, and I don't necessarily disagree with the idea, but I wouldn't take it out of the operating budget, I would ask them to use it to pay for the capital items in the budget instead. Take out the operating budget, that's a two hundred thousand dollar goal next year, they have to make up. If they need that, I'm going to round up, if they need thirty-eight million dollars, you gave thirty-seven, nine. You've got to make up that hundred thousand dollars, which is not there next year, because they take that out of one-time basis. Where capital is a one-time, theoretically, a one-time expenditure, and you might not necessarily need that next year, that's what they continue to do, capital.
Where's our capital fund for the school department, that is proposed budget? There isn't?
There's, there's, there isn't, the capital fund for the school department are exactly what you just said, and we're using fund surplus this year, so the town is not providing us any capital. We're using six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of our own funds, money we would normally ask them to. So, if we were to take money out of the operating budget, you would have to make up that money for next year.
Well, I would point out, the school department has been, and the student population's been declining, most if not everyone, the last ten years or so. Biggest one year, but that wasn't the case a couple of years ago. But the, you know, our budget continues to rise. Again, it's not criticism of the exercise of the budget by the school committee or the administration, just simply. Just simply because I can't pull, I can't recommend pulling money out anywhere else in this budget because it's so tiny. It'd just fall apart. So certainly at this level, uh, I make that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You want? Cheers.
I was nominated tonight to take the flak on this side, so here we are. As, as far as the capital improvements, it's been mentioned that we were at zero uh, in our budget this year for the level funded, for the zero for capital improvements. And it was pointed out with the state. Right now, they're, they're looking at new legislation. I don't know if it's passed yet or not, but it's proposed and it's a long time in coming where the, uh, there has to be basically a line item, it has to be in the budget coming up for, uh, the buildings, uh, as far as for maintenance. And, uh, just a, a brief comment where we haven't, where we haven't been doing that. Uh, I'd like to go over this. We have about four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of buildings in the school system. At the four hundred dollars a square foot I mentioned, that's a hundred and eighty million dollars for the buildings. At three, at, uh, excuse me, at three percent, that's five point four million dollars a year to be allocated. And, uh, and that's what the state is talking, and they're talking about coming up with those figures by taking a, a percentage of the replacement of the buildings at three percent. They're talking about also calculating in another way at the square footage and then a three percent factor. And then also from our overall budget and whatnot, looking and taking a percentage that way. So, uh, as Mr. Fitzmorris has said, as far as the tight budget and that, it's, it's tight all over. And one, one last comment, and I was quite vocal on this. All of the kids right now in our school system do not have an individual computer. And at first, when I was thinking about this over the time, now, don't make little of that, because when we were in school, we used books and those books right now are computers. All our tests are on computers and if you people don't know that, you don't know what's going on for the kids. They need to have that.
Buy your own.
So we need that, we need that funding. These kids don't even have the right equipment and all that going on year to year. And if, and if you can't see that, then there's nothing else I can say. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
I thank Mr. Shears for these comments. I'd like not to make budgetary policy on an anticipated loss. But it also should be mentioned by myself that the school department has a long time, excellent history maintaining these buildings. Obviously, in one of them, I've been in all of them for the last years. And in some cases, they're, they're older than others, but they're well cap. And we have a lot of examples throughout the estate, but they are not well capped. My proposal for a hundred thousand dollars, not a criticism, uh, of the way we're maintaining our school. But I think we're doing a very good job. I believe you. It's a very important job and they don't get the credit they deserve. Thank you.
Any questions on the school department budgets? Is it?
So, um, we're not often in the same room with the school committee, but I just, as long as they're all here and the staff is here, I, I just wanna also echo on Mr. Fitzmorris's compliments to them. They have been doing an unbelievable job. Uh, they're very high functioning and, and I have to say that a couple of things I want to just point out that may not be generally known. Superintendent Riley has led efforts to develop the school budget using a zero-based budgeting process, which means that everyone has to come in, um, sit with a zero budget and defend every single item that they want. And, and conduct a pro, you know, a cost benefit analysis. And I think that that has led to an, an excellent strategic plan, which is both sensible and visionary. And just as an example, when the school had a security, the school had a security plan prior to the Parkland shooting and it was able to act quickly and then lend and expedite that plan. I think that comes from a kind of, um, very careful and considered approach that our superintendent and the school committee has taken. Secondly, unlike in other towns, our school department made sure that surplus dollars were put towards a five-year plan to continue capital improvements. And for that reason, the town will be getting a thirty-five percent reimbursement from the state. Now, our staff, what that means is our staff and our committee jumped through a lot of state hoops to make sure we got that thirty-five percent, uh, reimbursement, uh, which should be noted because for the town, it's a vital reason that our taxes have been kept lower. A conservative estimate is that that has been about three to four million dollars that the school committee has brought into the town uh, in the last five years. So, um, and one other thing I would say that many, many years has been spoken about that we should share costs and that that could help the town and school to work together. It never really happened until Mr. Rayner, our town administrator, Superintendent Riley, finally actually began to work together. And I think we've seen significant, uh, increased efficiencies and cost savings in the, in our IT department sharing, our facilities management sharing, and also in human resources. So, uh, I just wanna put those things out.
I have a question and also a comment on the gentleman talking about using computers in schools now. And I, you know, I'm not, uh, I'm not out of this world. I'm literally engineers to develop computers way back in the wind. I don't like them to this day, but that's a terrible point. First of all, gentlemen, or to all, I have a question. Are these laptops? Are these full installed computers? These are laptops?
Chromebooks.
Okay, good. See, I, I have one grandson still in Highsville and he has to buy his own laptop on the west coast. So I'm asking the question, who is responsible for those laptops? What, what if a student loses their laptop? Who pays for it? What happens to it at the end of the year when they graduate?
He purchases insurance. He purchases insurance so that if they're broken, they're covered and they get replaced.
I'm not hearing anything.
Okay. It, it is insurance purchase for the laptops, so if they're broken or stolen.
And these are, these are Chromebooks. These are like three hundred dollar computers, so these are not full-blown, narrow laptops. And after four years of use, they're, they're getting them in sixth grade and then carrying them up. And, you know, at, by the time they get to the high school, I don't know if a middle school computer will be... Are we anticipating those sixth graders to go all the way to the twelfth grade with those, uh, Chromebooks or through, through their middle school years and then get updated when they get to high school?
Yes, no, they won't make it all the way through. I'd say the most you can get out of this four years.
So four years.
So by the time they get out of school, those, they're, they're not, they've been through their useful life.
So I'll still ask a critical question, if they lose one.
Insurance, insurance.
There's an insurance policy to pay for it.
Sure, thank you.
So if it's drawn to broke.
Thank you very much.
Hang on a second. Tommy, you can pick up.
Uh, in addition, a lot of people don't know that, uh, obviously, our IT department has been authorized by Dell to be a service center, so we provide internal development for years, mainly for websites.
I just, I just wanna correct the inaccuracies. The school department and the town council worked very well together in two thousand and eleven when, um, we had, we had a total milestone when we increased their budget by a million dollars. In return, they got rid of the seven hundred thousand dollar warrants that were going on every single year. And if people don't understand what that is, warrants were borrowing that was going on the town side for school items. Uh, school, uh.
Jellet?
Yeah, there were school items such as computers and, um, IT stuff that we were told that, just like we told tonight, that they need for their education. But the town side was borrowing at seven, to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars every single year to pay for those items. So we increased their budget by a million dollars to get rid of that borrowing because we all know the block will be paying lots of interest that could be used elsewhere. So, and that, that was a huge thing that happened in two thousand and eleven. Very proud that that happened. Oh, and the insurance, the, they seem to be repaying the bad insurance.
So the total, um, account appropriation for the school department is thirty-two million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. An increase of two point four nine percent. With the reduction of state aid, uh, I'm gonna round up to three hundred thousand dollars, which is ninety-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen, two hundred and nineteen, yeah. Uh, which is a decrease of six point five two percent. Total bottom line of the school department budget is thirty-eight million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which includes the town appropriations, state aid, federal funding, uh, reimbursements from tuitions from the county and other schools as well. Any other questions on the school department budget? Other expenditures that are in the budget, I'm going to page fifty-eight on the online and page probably fifty-six. I wanna start with the Melville. Uh, the, the expenditure summary with Melville, Tom. Melville is a man of house. Thank you. So the expenditure summaries, um. So other expenditures, the largest increase you see there is debt service. Increase from two point four seven zero one one five up to two hundred, two, two million, nine hundred thousand, four hundred, four, two million, nine hundred and four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. That's a half million dollars for the initial payment for the police station. Uh, after next year, that is anticipated to go, going down after next year. This is our big year with the, uh, that's our people. Town capital, which is being paid for all of the cash, is three million, uh, three hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. The ticket's either the white thousand, I think bottom line is three million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine. OPEP payment, uh, directed to our OPEP trust fund is twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we are beginning to pay down a CIP negative fund balance, that's fifty thousand dollars. And then the fund balance transfer, which, uh, any money left over as a surplus is being transferred into the fund balance, so that's just a placeholder. That takes that total line item down to seventy-five thousand dollars flat. So, the total municipal budget of twenty-six million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. With a total school budget minus, minus excess, I'm gonna bring our total budget of sixty-three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, the capital improvement is that it's gonna be done this year?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Can you please repeat in, in this number, please?
The which one? It's two, uh, twenty-six million?
Yep.
Two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, that it should not have changed. Remember, we took the six thousand and put it into the, uh, OPEP. Here's the extra mark piece for the anticipated ones over Melville. I'll just round this. So the total line item budget for the town is, uh, sixty-three million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one eighty-three. Capital improvement progress to be done this year include, uh, replacing after the fall, after the fall system with two hundred and fifty-three, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Upgrading all the lots in town hall. Town hall furniture replacement at ten thousand dollars. We're gonna do a full facility assessment of all the town buildings to get us a baseline, see what we need to do and hopefully keep the building standing rather than have to do replacements. We're upgrading the security in the campus office. Playground safety, we're, we're upgrading some of the Highland Park, Raymond Farms and Turnpike playgrounds. We're continuing to paint, clean up town hall, that's forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we're continuing to replace signs. Uh, we're finishing replacements, I think it's finally, it will be done this year. We have twenty thousand dollars to do another pool or two, hopefully, if the damage where it was caused with that. Uh, repairing damage to the, uh, Glen Stables riding ring, accident roof trusses on the riding ring, new furnace for Glen Park. Uh, a new fuel pump for D W. Work to be done on building nineteen twenty, it's one of the buildings that I thought, that was built in nineteen twenty. Yes, the nineteen? Nineteen ten, okay. Uh, back close at Glen Park, required by the state laws. Uh, more improvements to Glen Park buildings. And then thirty thousand dollars is earmarked for the Mount Hope project, but we tried to get funded, so, uh, that may not get utilized, we'll see. And then a new server for the town. Those are the capital improvements. School department is doing capital improvements as well, being paid for by their surplus. Uh, that total is seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Correct, yes. Seven twenty-nine, one fifty? Here. Seven ninety-seven, five sixty-five is on that side. I got seven twenty-nine, one fifty. Here on a total, capital improvement of seven ninety-seven? I'm just looking at the budget that was online. Okay, uh, we're actually doing five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the school department's doing five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the capital improvements as part of their capital plan. And also some upgrades that were upgraded to be paid for with, uh.
Impactage.
Impactage, thank you, Andrew. Uh, for safety. Any further questions on the budget? There'll be a final discussion, um, on Monday night, the twenty-fifth, where it will be a final adoption and the entire ordinance will be written into the record. Yes?
I wonder if the town ministry can give us the debt service next year? Or is the, uh, two, uh, what else? Nine hundred and four thousand?
Two, two, two million, six hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. Page sixty-four. The town, one hundred and fifty thousand. Fifty-four, change. Any further questions? Comments? Do we know, do I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, if you would, so that would be, yes, I have another comment.
Uh, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rayner and Superintendent Riley, our financial directors, Mr. Hoffman, all the staff that have done such a amazing job on this budget. We've been watching this. Uh, again, to build Zirby B Grinder, that is the town council. And, uh, I think sausage that is produced, uh, is, is a very good sausage. Given to keep our, although there are taxing pieces, we're still in the lowest. we're still in the lowest third of the state, or is that for towns that have a score in our school system, where there are only nine municipalities in the state that have lower property taxes than we do, and with all this, Mr. Rayner's managed to clear up some inconsistencies in previous years' budgets, so we can get, so we know exactly how, where our funds are supposed to be going, what they're going for, and it's, it's been a hot, it's been a hot process to watch, so I just wanted to thank our staff for the, for the job that they've done, despite getting grilled by the council meeting, and I apologize for the , or the rulings, but we are supposed to be supervising overseas, or that our staff do, but I think it's also part of our responsibility to thank them for the wonderful job, they're doing what they do. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you guys.
I, I, I just want to echo that because, um, a lot of people don't realize that two-thirds of our budget is the school department, and that the, and, and of the remaining third, about half of that is non-discretionary spending, so we're looking at pension, the wage benefits lots, and so really, it's only about five to ten percent of the entire budget that is discretionary, and, you know, one thing about our budget is that there are three quarters of the other towns in Rhode Island that offer our services, that you could go to, that you can pay higher taxes, and I see these people in the audience, boys too late, departing from the fire, she getting, uh, Krantz and, and Mr. Helfman and Mrs. Higgins, who are, our staff is just so outstanding, I think we have to realize that we are getting services in this town at such a high quality level for practically the lowest amount of taxes we can have, that I challenge anybody to, you know, say that they can find a better situation. And because a lot, I think, it's not that I'm not sympathetic to the tax problems that people are pointing out, those, as they all recognize, are coming from outside of the town, and I just want to point out that our staff is, is trying to fight that situation as best they can and doing an outstanding job. And I just, there's a fact that was brought to my attention just today that I have, that I have to point out, it's one of these hidden facts that we might not realize about our town. Mr. Helfman, who's in charge of our taxes, the five-year average of annual write-offs has been reduced to eleven thousand seven hundred and five dollars compared to the previous five-year annual tax write-off, this is where we collect it, of forty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and our current collection agency has brought in over two hundred and twelve thousand dollars compared to the previous collection agency which brought in zero since November two thousand and eight. So that's just one example of kind of work that our staff, specifically Mr. Helfman, has done for the town, and I just want to recognize all of you because you're, you're very much on the heroes as far as I'm concerned. Thanks so much.
Very good. I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All of you prepared. Hi, I propose motion passes.